Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council Health September 19th, 2017. We'll start our meeting with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda.
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Barker, that council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of September 19th, 2017 as presented.
All in favor? It's carried. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Tonight I am going to be declaring a declaration on item bylaw seventeen zero nine seven, at which time I'll step down and councillor Mino will sit in the seat until that is discussed. Petitions and delegations, I guess the first up is Eric Nielsen from Aqua, and Anthony is going to be joining him as well. Welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for having us. I just want to start by saying this year is going to be the second year of what we call our One Water Program where we have grade eight students that go through about a week of training with us. They learn about water treatment and wastewater treatment and they go home and tell their parents what to flush and what not to flush and how to treat their systems. So it's a good positive thing. We're doing it through KLDCS again, so try to make that an annual thing. Just wanted to give you a brief update on where we stand with respect to our project to try and remove the iron and manganese from the water. We've done a lot of testing and we've had other professionals up as well. So we're going to address the sampling results, we're going to address the dioxide treatment options. There's a few that were out there. So we had to hunt for a couple of things. We had to hunt for, of course, the best value. We had to hunt for the best system and we had to hunt for something that was going to work the best as well, right? So this is the work that we've done so far. We're in the midst of just nailing down our pilot trial and then we'll talk about some of the issues that could arise and how we're going to mitigate those issues, okay? And then we'll talk about long-term solutions. So as we mentioned earlier, we're into the testing phase. Iron and manganese dissolve into the lake water, especially in the winter. And in the winter, as we had mentioned before, the iron and manganese tends to rise to higher levels within the water and that's when we pull it into our intake. So we had to mitigate this, all right? When it's in solution, iron and manganese is in its lighter form, okay? They're missing one electron. It's an iron two and a manganese two. The idea behind getting rid of it is we have to oxidize it. We have to give it a very heavy oxidizer. Going to turn it into an iron three and a manganese three, make some manganese dioxide and that will drop. That will precipitate, okay? So you'll see from the graphs that it's our winter months. If you see the blue is our finished water, the red is the raw water. We see in the winter months, right, almost from freeze-up right on through until the ice goes off. The minute the ice goes off the lake and the lake gets a bit more oxygen, we get in good shape. But during the winter freeze-up months, we definitely see a spike in iron and manganese and this is what's causing, not causing all of the problems with our dirty water, but certainly contributing to it. And so if we could stop it at the source, that's our goal. And like we had mentioned before, the current plant, it's not treated. It's not built to remove iron and manganese. So we want to test the chlorine dioxide system. It's going to be a pilot trial that we run during the winter months. We're going to install it in December, have it ready to fire up for freeze-up, and we're going to run it through until the end of March, okay? You'll see from some of the testing, on the bottom graph, you'll see the bottom graph that during the winter months with the treatment that we have, we're able to pull all the iron out. Anthony started with some enhanced, you know, trying to throw soda ash at the front end last year. And so we pulled out some of the manganese. He definitely pulled out all the iron, but we were still left with the manganese and sometimes that's what's causing the color. So we knew we had some more work to do. We looked at two general types of treatment systems, okay, from three different suppliers, okay? One is a treatment system using chlorine gas and then a 25% sodium chloride solution, okay? The sodium chloride is, in this case, the sodium chloride is the only new chemical that we're going to have to introduce to the plant. There's another system out there that uses dilute liquid chemical feed, 9% hydrochloric and then some sodium chloride. In this case, they also wanted to use sodium hypochlorite instead of chlorine gas. So now we're introducing three chemicals to the water treatment plant. This, to me, brings up a concern of safety for my operators. You bring in an issue of complexity to the system, so I like things simple. We already have chlorine gas there, so we thought it'd probably be wiser to take that approach. The good news about the system that we're going to try, again, just as an addendum, during the, the plan is to run it hard during the winter months, hard enough to remove what we have to remove. The good news coming from this is as an oxidizer, it's also going to remove organics from the water. It has the capability to pull out organics, organic carbon, okay, whether it's dissolved or not. And so what that is going to do is, you've probably heard the term of trihalomethanes. Trihalomethanes are a known carcinogen and although we're under the level, there's nothing wrong with pulling it down even more, right? So that'll give us something to brag about. We can probably make it just putt along during the summer months if we end up with this installation, okay? So it's not, there's a future use, you know, besides the original plant. Okay? So we're going to pilot the one using chlorine gas. It fits into one of our existing, our old fluoride chemical room. It's going to fit in there like a glove, generating the chemicals in the fluoride room. So we use concentrated chlorine dioxide, okay, and it's made in what's called a generator, okay? So with the sodium chloride and the chlorine gas, okay, that's where it makes the chlorine dioxide. The chlorine dioxide is what we inject into the raw water. It will react, and it's in a specific amounts, it's going to react with the iron and manganese and it'll precipitate out in our filters and then we're not going to see it from there on in, okay? It's controlled by, it's all, we're going to install all automatic controls, automatic dosing. There's a couple of different options that they gave us. Anthony and I thought it would be wisest to get the smartest option. Our plant right now has all the SCADA and all the brains to run itself. It's silly to put in something that we have to have an operator go down there and twist dials. You know, the 1970s are over. Okay? So why did we decide on this? Well, convenience. Chlorine gas is readily available. It's, the chlorine gas room is literally beside the room that we're going to use, okay? So we have all the chlorine gas monitors and the sniffers all around, so safety. That's my number one thing. So we're going to have, we're going to be installing it safely, okay? We have ventilation there. It has to be improved a bit, but we have ventilation. We have monitoring, we have the alarming and all this kind of stuff, the control. The original PID looping exists, okay? So all the control wiring that we used to have installed for the old fluoride, now we're going to borrow that, right? So now we have the signals going back and forth to the SCADA to control it. Okay, so the chemical addition, like I mentioned earlier, it's going to happen on the low-left side of the plant. We introduce it early into the process. The actual oxidation reaction is fast, okay? It happens right away, but it's always nice to have a longer mixing zone and whatnot. This will give it, it'll actually get it into its outer solution now, into a particle form. And then once the, once our flows start to slow down and our clarifiers and our filters, it's all going to sit down. Okay, so there's our chemical room layout. This is sort of the way we thought it would go. It's going to be on the back wall. It's going to be our system itself. The reason for that is because that's where there's actual, there's drainage there. There's drainage for, as you know, chlorine gas sinks. So there's actually ventilation on the floor there, so it's smart. There's more ventilation up top. It's just the smartest place to put it. Okay, so some of the issues, standard operator's safety, okay, using monitoring in chemical room and wet areas, wet well areas, okay? So we have to install one more air monitoring equipment in that room itself. We're going to put in another chlorine sniffer, okay? The big one, the issue with using chlorine dioxide is that there's a byproduct, okay? And it makes chloride and chlorates as a byproduct. They're regulated. You're only allowed one ppm of chlorates and chlorates. So through the testing and through the numbers that we've given to this company, we think we're going to approach maybe half of that. At the worst-case scenario, point five ppm, okay? So that's the good news. Now we don't have to put another backend on it to try to get rid of chlorates, okay? We didn't want to start exasperating the problem, of course. So it looks like that's going to be okay. We'll always, we'll monitor the iron and manganese in the finished water on a regular basis as we're running the system. We have to confirm that there's no impacts to any of the stainless pieces that are within the plant. It's an oxidizer, so we have to make sure of that. And again, this is going to be dosage control that mitigates that. And then again, for safety, we have to make sure that our ventilation in the old chemical room is fine for this, okay? Procurement for the preferred system needs to be dealt with. So we've received our prices. One of them is an outlier, way, way, way too high. The other two prices we're quite happy with. Now it's a matter of which system is going to be the best, okay? And the two prices that came in for each one of them are, they're fairly similar. One is the more complicated system, so this is where our balancing act will come. And then, and then at the end of the day, even though this system is in and it's running and we're not donating any iron and manganese to the system, don't forget, we still have iron and manganese in our old pipes, right? It's in the walls, so remember, this is not, we're not making any carpeted promises with this. The promise is we'll stop donating to it, okay? So where are we now? Raw water testing is completed. That's done. We said we were going to have that done by the end of the summer and we have. Procurement is essentially completed and pilot test system's been chosen, okay? We're going to use, it's a company called, it's an ADOC system. Yeah, Linxus, yeah. Okay, it seems to be the best. We've had a rep come up. The rep walked through the place with us. We have a few more questions for him. He has a few more questions for us, but the timing is fine. We're going to be online for probably an install in November, okay? Within the next couple of days, probably following this meeting, I just wanted to let you know where we are first. Then we're going to contact MOECC and let them know that this trial project is going to start. We have a fantastic relationship with MOECC and so we've done a number of trials. We've done a number of tests. They trust everything we do, so I don't see any, I don't see any issues there. Like I mentioned, we met with a system technical specialist September 7th, okay? We have a bit more tweaking and sizing to do. He's asking for our high flows and fire flows and what could possibly happen with the system. And then we have to plan our install and then we have to decide, this is the big one, where we're going to inject it, okay? Where within this early part of the treatment plant is the best place to inject it? And it's not a, this is the make or break for the project, right? If you put it in the wrong place, you're injecting for nothing, so. Like I say, we plan to install in early December and we'll get going very soon after that. Long-term, okay? So if this proves to be successful, which I think it will, then a full-scale system can be implemented after the pilot system, this pilot that we try, the people that are bringing it, it's going to be suitably sized, so we don't have to pull it out and put in another one. This is going to be, if this is the one we like, this is the one that stays, okay? We'll always continue to monitor iron and manganese and continue with the depth profile in the lake. This is a, this is a big one. We always, I want to know where that iron and manganese is within the lake because as we, we all know that climate change is upon us. It's not a lie. That's why we're sitting here as we speak. We, I want to make sure that it's not changing because if the levels of iron and manganese start to rise to levels that this current treatment system can't handle, we have to sink that way. So that's another thought. When Anthony and I were looking at this pilot and the package we buy, we want to make sure we have a package that's going to be capable to treat everything into the future as well, you know? We want to see past our nose, right? And we'll continue to monitor hotspots in the distribution system where, you know, as we get more calls and whatnot, Don and his crew are going to monitor that and so we will still know where there are the problem areas in Kirkland Lake's distribution system, okay? And then, like I said, we'll monitor other benefits from the chlorine dioxide such as THM reduction as well, okay? So everything's on track. Do we have any questions?
Well, thank you for the presentation. I'm not going to pretend I understood everything that you were talking about technically, but I am pleased that you are back today and you are bringing with you a good possible solution. So with that, I'll just ask if any councillors have, councillor Roman?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. First, it's cost. You say you have a rough idea now between the two.
Yeah, so when we, remember, when we were here in May, this pilot study and everything, you know, we had allotted fifty for it, right? We don't, we're not going to, it's not going to cost that much for the rental. We think we're probably coming around thirty-two, thirty-five, Anthony, for all this work that we've done. Now, and then when we had also, in the initial stages of speaking with different providers, you know, so this is where we thought, oh, we'll be into about the four hundred thousand mark for the job. This particular unit is coming in at about, all said and done with the parts and appurtenances, probably in around the one twenty mark, Jim. So very good news on that as well. And by the time we, you know, we're have to tie it into the SCADA, so we need, we'll have some programming. We'll have some, you know, again, the monitoring equipment and increase the ventilation and whatnot. It's going to, again, Jim, I'm not going to make any promises, but I would say half of our original estimate. We're going to come in and we can have this project done.
Okay. And the other question I had, you've got your chart showing iron and manganese levels. Have you got historical records?
No, no, and I dug into it too from the old days when the plant was originally built because I thought, you know, when they built it, you know, what were the levels in the lake at that time? Well, I couldn't find any raw water testing, especially at the different depths like we have done, right? So I didn't have any historical, I didn't have any data other than the data that we had, that Anthony and the team have got.
Okay, so because that's going to make it more difficult to assess than really how successful this is. Is there any thought to maybe introducing it halfway through the season and seeing how it impacts the actual levels that we're seeing? You know what I mean?
In the raw water?
Well, rather than a four-month trial because we experienced these elevated levels for four months, letting it go for the first two months and then putting it in, seeing what impact it has on the levels at that point. Because if you put it in right at the start, you might see a decrease, but you really don't know how much of an impact.
Okay, exactly. So during the trial, we continue to monitor their iron and manganese coming into the plant and then we're going to monitor their iron and manganese leaving the plant. So we will know, okay, we have a ninety-five percent reduction, a hundred percent reduction, or whatever the answer may be. So yes, the monitoring and the testing continues during the whole trial, okay? So even, and so even to the point where what we'll do is I know I have about a seven-hour window for this drop of water to make it all the way through the plant. So when we decide to measure the iron and manganese that day, seven hours later, we'll test it out of the tail end and we'll say, here's how that drop of water made out.
Yeah, Jim, and also if we were to, if we were to hold off on adding the, on removing the iron and manganese from the system, you would actually get deposits building up in the distribution system, right, in the tower as well. And then even if you stopped the new iron and manganese from going in, you wouldn't even know it, right? You have no way to tell.
Good question. Councillor Mino?
Eric, there's iron and manganese. Is the iron the one that's responsible for making clothes dirty?
It's mostly manganese in this case.
So the manganese is the guilty party?
Yeah, and unfortunately, Norm, that was a tough one to get rid of. Like I say, last year Anthony yanked out that iron, you know, in the blink of the eye. So, you know, we saw these results, okay, now we're cooking, but.
Okay, because I saw the graph shows that the iron levels are very low.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm thinking maybe that problem will go away.
Yeah.
So it'll come back.
Yeah, yeah. Iron typically gives the red water and then manganese will give us the brown stuff, okay?
Also, the, with the injection of more chlorine, is the water going to have the characteristics of more, I don't know how to say, Javix-like?
No, no. The amount we add, the only amount we add is used solely for that reaction, okay? So there doesn't end up, it doesn't end up with a chlorine smell. There's no free chlorine left after in order to smell. It's just a reaction, okay? So it's all chewed up just, and again, so if we see levels of, say, okay, we have levels of point one manganese coming into the plant, we know that we have to inject about point four chlorine dioxide to it. Sort of the ratio that we need, okay?
Yeah, and this chemical is actually often used in other places where they have taste and odor issues, right? So they often add it to go and reduce taste and odors. So I think it's going to be.
Good point, good point, Anthony. It deters growth within your, the walls of your pipes and everything else. It's a really, as a matter of fact, like I say, like Anthony said, it's used, it's used in summer months in many, many of the states for that reason, taste and odor control.
A few more. When you talk about the, what do they call there, the Ministry of Environment and CC there, like you've got to get their permission. You said everything you do to the plant has to be approved by them.
That's correct.
So right now it's not approved. This would be what, in place and then approved, or?
Okay, so with the trials, typically what it is, is a lot of the information that we have here, this is the information that we present to the MOECC and they say, okay, you can try, you can do the trial. It's not as, so if I, if we said, okay, we're going to build a plant and, you know, from scratch and we're going to have this and this and that, that's when it turns into about a one-year ordeal, back and forth between MOECC. With trials, they're typically rather quick with us. So even we had to ask for a trial for the soda ash when we started that. We had to ask for a trial with the, with the new polymer. So it's sometimes, it's pretty much an email giving the information and why and then they respond and say, okay, we're going to give you the trial. I want you to report on this, this and that and get back to us in three months and let me know how you did.
Especially when it's a chemical that's often used in other plants, right? So they already, they already kind of have information on that chemical and it makes it easy for them, right? They know it's tested and.
It brings me to the finance. This is a pilot project.
Yes.
And it's going to get some kind of recognition from the MOE. There is, I think you've mentioned in the past that there's other communities who have a similar problem or a combination of similar problems and many municipalities. So my question would be, why would not the ministry take this seriously and actually fund this pilot project to arrive at a suitable conclusion for all the rest of the communities that have this problem?
That's an excellent question. The ministry is, they tend to, I mean, they have excellent intentions, but they tend to only identify what your issues are. They don't like to provide any solutions. They, you know what I mean? They tend, they tend to veer away from that. When it comes to funding for it, I have, I have a good feeling that there's going to be another round of funding coming along from our prime minister, you know, because there's an election coming up. There'll be another round of funding. And a good portion of his funding is donated strictly towards water and wastewater treatment. And so for funding-wise, we'll probably be able to take advantage of that.
Yeah, but that's.
But the ministry themselves, that's not their, that's not their priority.
Is there, is there a program whereby you can apply for some kind of assistance? Like we have roads, sometimes we'll get ninety percent paid, we pay the ten percent. I'm just, I'm exploring that avenue.
Well, yeah, so most of these funding programs, the latest one with the clean water and wastewater funding, right? That was, that was where the town had to kick in twenty, twenty-five percent of the cost. There are some when, when OSIF comes out, Ontario Small Community Infrastructure Funding comes out. Then they're into the ninety percent. It's just a matter of usually, Norm, waiting for the funding to be announced. And then if you have a project ready, a shelf-ready project, then we can submit that.
Well, aren't you going to do that on behalf of the town?
Absolutely.
For now?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. This can be, this is going to be ready to go by April. We'll have everything in our back pocket. We're going to know what we need. We're going to need, we're going to know how much it's going to cost. So by April of 2018, we're ready to move one way or the other and whether it's, you know, hopefully we get some funding announcements by then and, but from the ministry themselves, no, no.
That's kind of weird because what's going to happen now, if we're successful with this and it proves to be, you know, the right solution, everybody else is going to piggyback on this.
Oh, yeah. But that's good. It's good news for everybody, right?
Yeah, but the ministry should be the leader in implementing this, I believe. It's a common problem. It's not, it's not every, you know, it's not just Kirkland Lake problem.
No, you're absolutely right about that, yeah.
So how do we pressure the ministry from this end?
I don't have the answer to that.
Okay, so I know an answer. It's a political one, but would you suggest that we explore down that lane as well or that avenue? Or is that going to hinder what's going on?
What I would do, what I would do in your shoes is wait until April when we have a report that's up and ready, see if there's funding coming out and then apply at that time. I don't think there's, I've never heard of anybody being successful with the Ministry of Environment saying to them, we need your help with this issue or that issue. I've never heard of any success in that. And that includes, Norm, you know, any community in Ontario, any First Nation community in Canada for that matter. You know, I manage a lot of First Nation communities as well and boy, oh, boy, it's, sometimes you're quick to identify the problems, but not to help with solutions, so.
So the numbers you're talking about tonight, which are not confirmed, but they're kind of, you know, ballparking.
Yeah.
At what point of our budget are we committing these to this? Because you're talking at December start and there's money involved to install this stuff. So you're asking us tonight or telling us tonight? Is that, I don't?
Okay, so in May, we had the council resolution to move forward with the study, right? So all this, all this piloting and everything is still wrapped within that study. So no more money is going to be asked for until we have the study completed and with the pilot tests as part of the study and that will be sometime next April.
So in April, you're coming back to this table?
Yes.
And you're telling the council or the people of Kirkland Lake, here's what it's going to cost you?
That is correct.
That's a little late because we have a budgeting, well, we could probably make it in time for the budget exercise, but I'm just, hopefully your April date is solid.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's the whole thing. Norm, that's why we're being very, very careful about everything we do right now. I'm not going to come, I don't want to come to the town with a report that's not, that's not dead accurate, right?
Okay, I have confidence.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, just to put my hat on as the treasurer, just to, the budget will probably be moved up in 2018, simple reason being it's an election year. So what we probably will do is put in some type of contingency for it. I'll be working with you guys to put in a contingency at that time, just because April's probably too late for it, so.
And, and as far as budgeting goes to, um, you know, we can have, I'll have costs within a few thousand. I'll know the price in January. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So Eric, uh, just before I pass it over to Counselor Roman, I'm, uh, during the summer months, have we got many, um, uh, it, it appears that the problem is sort of freeze-up. Uh, how has the, uh, water been during the summer months as far as, uh, residents?
I...
Have you had any?
I think it's been clean, Don.
I'm hiding it.
I, I, I haven't had, I haven't received any complaints.
Okay, that's, that's...
No, it's been very minimal.
Okay, and, um, I, I, this might sound silly, but, uh, it seems the water, the some of the problems occur when the lake's frozen over. Um, why don't we just drill a bunch of holes in the ice?
It won't provide enough oxygen.
Won't, eh?
Yeah, okay. And Anthony won't volunteer to do that either.
We, we could have ice fishing, like...
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so it won't, eh? There's, uh, a number of holes. Nobody goes on the lake anyways.
It's an entire, it's an entire lake depletion of oxygen, right? So, and so what happens is, is the iron and, the iron and manganese, it's, it's actually iron and manganese bacteria. So they start to starve for oxygen way down deep. They say, hey, I need to get some air. So they start coming up higher and higher. That's why they make it to our intake. That's why we studied it at all the different levels, to say, where are these guys, right?
And, um, the fact that we, we don't transfer, uh, water from McTavish to Gull, does that play any, 'cause we, we have the infrastructure there, but does that play any, uh, anything on that?
Yeah, so early on, when this problem started happening, um, or we started to notice it, I went to McTavish, I drilled some holes, and I checked the water there as well. And you got the same problem, yep.
Okay. Counselor Roman.
Just, just to bring up, with regards to budgeting, this is water, and we, we typically do our water budgets in December for, for January. So, I guess we'll be needing numbers a lot sooner than, than April.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna get to offline. It's, because we have, it's on the water bills, on the water rates, so the, the timeline is, uh, more advanced. So I'll work with you to try to figure out a good, you know, uh, number that we can insert there, so...
I was just gonna, what is, what is ADOCs?
Oh, that's the, that's the, the proprietary, chemical of the, the proprietary name of the, the system.
So this is a company that specializes in the chemicals?
Uh, no, the, this is the, this is the name of the system. It's an ADOC system.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's not a company?
No. Company's Lanx, what are they, Lennox?
Yeah, actually, Lennox International Dioxide, they've got a few different names they go by, but Lennox is the name that they refer.
And this is provincial, or it's Ontario, or?
It's Ontario, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, Southern Ontario.
And ADOCs is the system?
I think ADOCs is, yeah, like Eric says, the proprietary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, Anthony, and, uh, thank you very much, Eric, for, uh, coming back, like you said you would. Uh, we'll go from there.
Good.
Thank you. So the next, uh, under petitions and allegations, Michelle Hasty, were you coming up to, uh, do a presentation, or?
No, I have a presentation, just kind of, um, listening to what I was gonna be able to say, and it was sort of a good, good goal for her, but she felt like, very good. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Now, we should start seeing results, especially then. Perfect, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, okay.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have the acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
It's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Minow, that council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The regular meeting of council held September fifth, two thousand and seventeen, and the meeting to open tenders for scrap metal at the landfill site held September eighth, two thousand and seventeen.
All in favor? It's carried. Uh, reports of municipal officers. Uh, Peter, you gonna speak on the, uh, item six?
Yeah, I got some reports here.
Six-one.
I'm there, I'm wearing many hats, so I just gotta know which, uh, hat I'm supposed to wear when I speak to what report. So the, uh, the first report is the resignation of municipal closed-meeting investigator. So this is my, uh, corporate services hat. Um, basically, we've been notified by our existing or, or past, um, closed-meeting investigator that, uh, he wishes to, or he has resigned from the position. As the report states, there, we have, uh, we've had, uh, this is the second one, that has resigned for the town. The default option in the province of Ontario falls to the Office of the Ombudsman. Um, we are currently under an ombus, uh, an ombudsman investigation. Uh, so it, uh, basically what we are recommending here is we stick with the Office of the Ombudsman as our closed-meeting investigator, and not bother looking for a new, um, a new, a new person to do, a new lawyer to, to look at it. This is required under the municipal act, so, okay?
Yes, please.
Okay, I have two resolutions that go with this. Uh, the first one is, um, moved by Counselor Minow, seconded by Counselor Barker. The council accepts the letter of resignation from Rick Ems and repeals the two thousand and ten closed-meeting investigator policy.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Carried.
The second one is, uh, moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Minow. The council accepts the Office of the Ombudsman as the default meeting, uh, closed-meeting investigator.
All in favor? It's carried.
My next item is to do with, uh, the hosting of council meetings. Um, basically, uh, in a nutshell, our procedural bylaw states that we have to have our council meetings held in this room. However, this building is not, uh, AODA compliant, um, for accessibility. So what I would like is direction to investigate, host, investigate the option of moving the town hall meetings to Heritage North. Obviously, the Heritage North building is a newer building. It satisfies all the AODA compliance. It has all the proper, um, more modern building code, uh, standards. So, uh, hopefully, um, what I wanna look into is, uh, costs such as what is required, uh, what would, what room would we take up over there, uh, and whatnot. Just to, uh, come back with a report trying to, uh, to, uh, make our commu-, our council meetings at least, um, more accessible, uh, in the immediate term, so...
Okay. I, I, I know years, oh, sorry, Norm.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, in years past, uh, council made a point of, uh, holding council meetings at, uh, different venues, uh, i.e. the museum. Uh, we had it at Hockey Heritage North, as it was known then, a few times. Um, and, and you're correct, uh, Heritage North has all the, the, um, uh, facilities that can, um, that can, uh, house, uh, people with disabilities, uh, whereas, uh, here in our town hall, that's many, many, many years old, a lot of times people get stuck in the elevator. And if you manage to get up, uh, we don't really have washroom facilities, uh, as you had mentioned. So, uh, I'm certainly in favor of, uh, looking at, uh, other venues, uh, whether it's hockey, whether it's Heritage North all the time, or we, we switch, maybe at the museum, Heritage North. But, uh, I think Heritage North's probably, uh, ticks all the boxes. Uh, so I, I would certainly be in favor of that. Counselor Minow?
Peter, the, um, um, two things. Uh, Hockey Heritage North, in terms of its square footage, could it handle all the services that this building has, in Oranguea?
It, yeah, um, I guess we'd have to look at that. What, one of the benefits of Heritage North building is its ground level. So our public counter, um, we will still need to address the accessibility for the rest of the services we offer in this building. Um, the one of the, I'm trying to do it in phases. So one of the things is that if we can do town hall meetings at, at a, at a more accessible location, that'd be great. I, I will be looking into moving the entire administration, um, somewhere that's either investigate, investing money into this building, right, or some other place, uh, as an option. So, uh, that is, that is a regular, uh, that is probably another reason for inefficiency as well. Uh, just from, I know this building is also old, it has, uh, the energy consumption of this building is pretty expensive. Um, again, we have a, a relatively new building over there, so I will be looking that, at that. As part of this requirement is, the reason I had to come to council, this requirement is because the procedural bylaw requires us to have it in this room. Um, moving, whether it's that, the city hall, the town hall location staff there, or other staff, I will do that on my own, just as an administrative in the back, and then to come back should we, should we choose to move.
So you'll, you'll give us scenarios, because I'm, I'm on the same thought as you. If, uh, if this building needs extensive renovations for the first floor access, and that cost offsets moving over there, we're at the same point in terms of the dollar value. So being all there in a sort of more, uh, compliant way with AOD.
Yeah.
That's, I would favor that route, but, I mean, if there's other alternatives.
Yeah, and, and the, the one benefit of Heritage North, it is a bigger facility. Um, and I wouldn't just speak for, uh, town hall administration staff. Our other public walk encounters that's heavily used is the physical services building, and that is another, uh, deficiency, uh, as well. So, um, again, I'm looking at it from a, a, a global, a global perspective. Um, but, you know, starting with right now, uh, town hall meetings.
The other, the other thing too, you mentioned procurement bylaw. Uh, if you put it in soon, in, in terms of, say, in this term, uh, you might wanna put either the Legion or another place in the ballad as well, because Hockey Heritage, I mean, we've got mining conventions and all kinds of things going on there, and that could, it could, you know, run into a sort of a, you know, section with something like that.
And we might wanna rotate it, as I guess historically, what was the, the history here?
Well, there was a once-a-year thing. We used to go there at Christmas time or before Christmas, and, uh...
So, yeah, so maybe the, maybe the motion, as opposed to, uh, changing the venue specific to a specific venue, just leave it open, right? As opposed to identifying Heritage North, just leave it open as, investigate options for changing the venue.
Well, as long as the public knows, that's where the, the go-to place, but it's an exception sometimes.
Yeah.
And we don't wanna cancel a wedding or something because there's a council meeting. So I'm just looking at the options.
I don't think weddings get, happen on Tuesday nights, but perhaps they do, so...
Okay, thank you.
And, and the other question? There's a resolution for that, I guess.
It's moved by Counselor Minow, seconded by Counselor Barker. The council directs the chief administrative officer to investigate options to change the venue for council meetings to alternative locations.
All in favor? It's carried.
The next item is, uh, basically a procedural item required by one of our funding agencies. It's, uh, basically to authorize, uh, the Director of Economic Development and Tourism to submit an application for funding to FedNOR for forty thousand dollars for commercial industrial land development. They require this before we, as part of our application.
All in favor? Oh?
Moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Minow. The council authorizes the Director of Economic Development and Tourism to submit an application for funding to FedNOR in the amount of forty thousand dollars for commercial and industrial land development.
All in favor? It's carried.
So, um, the next item on the agenda has to do with the, uh, the Aquatic Center financials. I'm providing an update. Uh, we have some guests here tonight from the, uh, Monteith Building Group and Salter Peterson. So, uh, Salter Pelon, sorry, my bad. Um, my bad. Uh, so they're here to, part of the, part of the report speaks to some items, uh, of their, of their, uh, they're bringing to our, our project management team. So, um, they're here to basically answer any questions the council may have, once I, uh, go through my, uh, my little report. So, uh, basically, this report, I'm asking for, uh, two things. Um, we increased the borrowing bylaw by a million dollars from twelve to thirteen million, uh, for the construction. And then to, uh, basically amend the agreement we'd have with Salter Pelon Architecture and increase it by six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to one and a half million. The, uh, the bylaw that we, uh, that we passed back in August a month ago, um, basically is already at its limit. So we have, uh, earlier this month, we found out some, uh, two items that we found out that were not included into the account, taken into that, um, that twelve million. One of them is the interest that we have to pay the, the bank for the construction loan. And so once the construction loan is completed, uh, we issue the debenture, uh, and then we, we do the borrowing of the debenture. But, uh, the banks obviously charge, for every loan, charges interest, so we basically need to account for it, and that was not included in, in the original twelve million. So the loan interest is anywhere from a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars at this point. Um, again, that, we won't know that figure until we go to issue the debenture, which is probably March twenty eighteen. The other, uh, the other piece is a technical piece, um, that, uh, I guess we had, uh, just discovered recently in the last, uh, two or three weeks, uh, with regards to the hydro voltage requirements for the facility. Uh, and I will, uh, defer to the engineers or the, uh, the lead on that, just to help explain it.
Oh, no, thank you, uh, it's really worshipful, sorry. Got it. Um, so what we're talking about here is a change, that is, um, it's a, uh, an authority requirement, uh, through the Electrical Safety Authority, and it comes as an issue of really, uh, safety within the building and the grounding grid that's required, uh, to ground all devices and all elements of the building, uh, for, for safety. So at the time of the original building design, um, there were assumptions made with what was known at the time about the extent and re- requirement of grounding, and that was included in the original price in the GMP. Um, uh, since then, there has been work that was done, uh, lots of infill work, earthwork is changed and things of that nature. Uh, as a standard procedure, what we do is do some, uh, resistivity testing again, after we know what the in situ, um, uh, uh, elements are gonna be like. What's come about from that is we send that, those results back to ESA. ESA does not only office review, but field review as well. So the long and the short of it is they've come back to us to say that we have to take the existing grounding grid that was originally as part of the GMP and increase it, um, to three times that size. That the resistivity of, of the existing conditions there that were assumed do not currently exist on that site anymore based on what's been done. So, um, this really comes about to us as a requirement from, from the authorities, um, that was, that would have been an unknown and unforeseen site condition that generated that, um, that Monteith wouldn't have had the ability to know about, nor ourselves at the time, uh, when this was originally done. So this, this feedback from ESA came, um, about three or four weeks ago. It's, it's relatively recent. Um, and so with that, we've had to go back and redesign the grounding grid system. Um, and so just by way of sidetracking on it, when we do an aquatics facility, all of the elements within that facility are grounded. Um, and we ground them for safety. And when we have a high voltage line, uh, transformer that's being used, which was done during the design, isn't included in this, we have to ground everything. So we ground, grind, ground everything from, um, the pool itself to the steel structure, all of the elements in the building, uh, mechanical systems, they're all grounded. So all of those pieces were taken into account as part of the design. What we didn't know was that the, what was tip, a typical assumption of what you need to provide as a grounding grid to do that, was not gonna be able to do that because of the, the existing conditions that were created. So that's where this came about as an unknown, as a result of the authority requirement, and which has led to, um, this costing that's been, been done recently. So hopefully that helps understand how we got to where we are.
Counselor Roman?
Um, can, can I ask, um, what, was any work done to install the, the initial, um, grounding grid? Like, or nothing's been installed yet?
No.
Is, is this like an, uh...
I'll let the builders have some...
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't proceed with the installation of the original grounding grid pending the new design of the, the larger grid. So there's no work, we don't have to remove anything that we've already done, if that's what you're asking for, yeah.
And if I may, uh, your worship, the, the reason why we did the, uh, ground resistivity testing was in advance of any of that work being done, and so that we could also make this some...
Can we speak up a little louder? We can't hear it.
Oh, sorry. And all, we, we went back and did the, uh, the testing, uh, as part of a, a, a safety check process, um, which you'd have to do before the actual installation. But also, we needed that information to share with ESA to get their approval for that installation. So I guess to, to Monteith Building Group point, that, that is what triggered this, and the work wasn't, nothing had been proceeded with before ESA was going to approve anything.
Counselor Barker?
You used the term "conditions created." What exactly changed from the original plan that would alter the conditions created? Like, was it the blasting, was it?
A, a combination, I would think. So we had, we had, uh, blasting of bedrock that had to occur. We had, um, we had engineered fill that had to be brought in, um, and... And that just changed the, the conditions so that the original testing and resistivity that was noted in the, the early stages of this changed when that work was done. So that's what prompted us to be told by E S A that the existing, the conditions that you exist currently now that have been created as part of this, don't meet this criteria. And we need to increase the grounding grid to suit the low resistivity of, of, of the soils and the bedrock. And, and you know, it's everything from the granulars that are used and, and everything that's, that we try to use to ground everything. So everything from asphalt to granular to bedrock, we use it all as part of a, trying to dissipate any, any loads that come through that.
Can I add to Jerry to help out a little bit? Basically this, is that good?
Is the green light on?
Yep, yep, green light's on. Basically the soil, the soil conditions that were on site when we started do not exist now. Basically, everything was stripped away. And we had to put in new granulars, concrete, you know, extraneous blasted rock and so on. So they could not test the conditions before the building was started. Because those, those conditions that were there prior to the construction do not exist now. So they had to test, test the soil conditions after we had, you know, placed all the grades and regraded the site and brought in all the fill.
And if I may, further to that, the, you know, as part of this process, we make assumptions out of what the required grounding grid size should be based on what we'll call normal conditions. So that is what was included in this. We had no way of, of knowing at that time what the ultimate resistivity was going to be based on the requirements for adding the concrete fill, the granular, everything else. So that's what's changed in this whole thing. But during design, what we want to also be able to do is not over design things because we've also been very cost conscious about the budget on this project from day one. So if we were to have over designed every element of, of the grounding grid, the structure and everything else, we wouldn't have been economical, as economical as we've tried to be through this process. So you know, we've only, we don't try not to over design everything, we try to design it right. And this is just unfortunate that this has come about and the E S A obviously is telling us that we, we have to do it, so.
Any other questions or? Councilor Mino.
You said this quote is valid until September twentieth, that's tomorrow. So what happens after tomorrow?
Well, I have to just, yeah, I can speak to the, it just really, we wanted to emphasize the urgency of the matter on, on our part really to achieve this task. It's part of the grounding design system is a layer of asphalt that is going to be installed or basically around the transformer to cover the grounding grid and protect the grounding grid. It's actually part of the, the system itself is asphalt. And the asphalt plant closes October the fifteenth, to be perfectly blunt. So we have to kind of work backwards from October the fifteenth. In order to maintain that schedule, you know, we've got the drill holes, we have to install the whole grounding system and have the asphalt in place prior to the asphalt plant closing to be able to transfer the incoming power system from the old main entrance to the new transformer. So in order to do that, we basically, we did, we worked backwards from that. Denver is the site superintendent, he's in charge of all the onsite services. Well, how much time do we need to install this grounding grid, get it all inspected, approved, get the asphalt down so we can transfer the power? And that's really the sense of urgency we wanted to, to, to convey in this whole thing. And also, you know, the quote is based on the asphalt, but also the holes that we have to drill to accomplish this task, to get the grounding grid in, is not a normal sized drilling hole. We have to drill twelve inch diameter holes, about twenty feet deep. And there's not a lot of drilling rigs around that can do that. Now, we have located a drilling rig that is close by and the company's kind of, you know, he's got it parked and he's holding on to it for so long. He says, otherwise I've got other clients who need it. He's going to move this thing and we don't know when, when and where we can get another drilling rig. Of course, if they got a truck, if we have to truck one from who, who knows where, of course, that's extra cost. So we were trying to keep the cost as minimal and as tight as we possibly could. So like the drilling company, for example, is saying, okay, I'll, I'll hang on, I'll wait for you guys till next week, but I gotta know, otherwise I'm, I'm going to look for other work for my rig. Same with the asphalt, Miller Asphalt, you know, they're busy putting asphalt down before the plant closes. And they've also agreed to say, hey, if you can, you know, we need to know next, next week to fit you in to our schedule before the plant closes, or we can't guarantee we can put your asphalt down. And if those things, you know, all don't fall into place, we can't turn the, you know, flick the switch and turn the power on. So I guess that's why we were, you know, not trying to be mean or anything, but we're just, we laid the facts out as the way they are. We're, we're just with the schedules of two main factors is really driving all this for us onsite.
I'm not too technical, but I'm, I'm just questioning how much square footage or square yards is two, thirty-two thousand dollars of asphalt get you? Because what are we paving here?
Yeah, it's about a little over two thousand square feet, six inches thick.
Six inches thick.
Yeah, it's, it's fair. It's not the, they have to put it down by hand and by small machine. Because we have, we have a transformer in the middle, it's about three meters by two and a half meters. And there's fourteen large pipe bowlers that are evenly spaced all around to protect this thing. So they basically got to bring the, bring the asphalt in with bobcats and rake it by hand. And compact it and so on. So that's, that's really the intense work there.
My driveway costs.
Yeah, I know, but you can't, that's, you can't just bring it like a road spreader. Yeah, it'll be done in the morning, right? That's who we were thinking too, but that's, it's just the location and where it has to go.
Thank you.
So just, so the technical experts, I just want to move on from my report. So this report also includes some other information that you don't, you're not voting on tonight. However, I am basically for the public interest, I am forecasting a operating budget for the new pool of up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I'm basically giving notice here that when it comes budget time, there will be a number inserted for up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars for operating impact of this capital project. There was other, another notice for the next year's budget is a contingency of about thirty thousand dollars for basically, from what I understand, hypothetical scenarios, they may or may not exist for when we drain the old pool. So again, from a accounting perspective, it is prudent for us to insert something should we need to hire specialized people, specialized equipment. I'm again, just putting it, a notice here through council to the public that that will be inserted in the, the twenty eighteen budget request. Lastly, I have been, I have received quite a few emails with regards to trying to look at the numbers of the pool from start to finish, from two thousand and nine, I guess, and when the pool started to current year. So I can't answer some of them, neither with my treasurer hat nor my C A O hat. So I am basically giving notice here that in the interest of trying to settle all these questions, that during the twenty eighteen budget deliberations, I will be requesting an extra fifty thousand dollars, a one-time payment of fifty thousand dollars if, if council so chooses to conduct a audit of the eight-year-old or nine-year-old pool projects finances. So those again, you're not voting on those tonight. They're here for information, the report explains some background on it. The only things you are, I'm requesting for tonight is to increase the borrowing bylaw and to basically update the, the current Salter Pelon contract wording. So, so it matches to what the costs are incurred.
And they'll be coming back as bylaws?
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
My next item is from my C A O hat. This is again, I'm, I've been doing an organizational assessment on town operations on the public service on basically a, you know, a wide scope thing since I've got here. And I just want to give a update. And from my previous role in the previous life of positions I've held, it's been a common practice to flag comment, budget corrections, mid-year budget corrections. So I'm wanting to start that. And the items I am highlighting here is basically again, this is giving notice that some point probably within the next month, I will be coming back to council requesting a increase in the operating line of credit, separate from the construction borrowing, this is the operating budget. That I will be coming back to council to reverse a bylaw that council passed earlier this year with regards to the tax rate that is set for the townships of Bernhard Morissette. That I will be looking at mitigating offer, options, right, to our pressures. And that I will be, I have identified a list of pressures that I will be speaking to more at the, at an open house. It's in my report today, but it is, it's mostly for public consumption. You're not voting on anything today, but basically I am forecasting a half a million dollar deficit in the operating budget in twenty seventeen. And under provincial law, as we all know, we can't carry a deficit, so it automatically rolls over. And it's the starting point of next year's tax, basically revenue requirements for next year. So in our case, it's, it hits the property tax levy. The, the adjustments and the corrections are outlined, happy to answer any questions there is. It also will impact the water, wastewater rate. Because I will be adjusting and moving money from the tax levy that shouldn't be on the tax levy and should be on the water rate. So and with this report, I am also hosting a, hopefully the first of a few community town hall meetings this Thursday at Heritage North at six o'clock. It will be hosted by me, I'll be doing a presentation, fifteen, twenty minute presentation, and then basically opening up the floor for, for anybody who attends to ask questions of, of their town's new C A O. And inviting through you the rest of the community to attend. I'm happy to answer any questions on the report if you have.
Councilor Mino.
Peter, on the Bernhard Morissette, us to reverse that bylaw, how much, how much money are we talking?
From what we calculate, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars that we've collected already in the town's coffers. So the last tax installment, right? So remember, the tax installment years start in July, sort of June, July, and they go to next year. So we've collected, we've had one tax installment, so we've kind of budgeted, it's about twenty, just under twenty-five thousand dollars. So if we, we reverse it, they're going to refund and or credit, depending on how we do it. And we, well, obviously we won't be getting that in the next installment either.
Okay, that, that was where I was going, is like, you're just going to give them a credit?
Yeah, credit or refund, I, I have to look at the, the legal requirements of how we, how we pay it back, right? If we could do a credit, ideally that makes it easier for everyone. However, the option I believe has to be, we, some people might want the refund.
And this is all connected with the water switch over of its own building?
Uh, no, this, no, no, the tax rate, well, I think in the twenty, when, when council approved the twenty seventeen budget, they moved wastewater to direct billing. And at the time, they had all, they had also increased Bernhard Morissette's tax rate from thirty-five to forty percent. As part of when you voted on the council, on the twenty seventeen budget.
Which is the illegal part or non-compliant part?
That's the non-compliant part. That's not the, 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 do we have a business case to move it forward? Yes. The process isn't as easy as voting on it during our budget process. So now we have to reverse that and then initiate a process to update, basically update that agreement from nineteen eighty-four.
I'm just curious, where will we get some red flags about this? I mean, the intention was not to do it like that from this council. The intention was to perhaps get them to pay a fair share, right?
Yeah, I, I think the, I think the intention is, is well-meaning and I, and I'm coming back, part of my report, I will be coming back with another motion to, to modernize the agreement. But I think it's, perhaps it was just a part of a, a simple accounting. Like, I, I, I don't know the answer to that because it was part of the budget that was passed earlier this year.
So we're correcting it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Councilor Barker.
I just want to commend you, Peter, for your diligence and everything. Taking over the C A O is maybe not an easy, an easy job, but I want to commend you for everything you're doing. And I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback from the community to the transparency you're bringing and to the, the corrections that you're bringing. So thank you.
I'll see what happens Thursday night. And the last is again, just my, my notice, following up on my notice of current year budget corrections report to council. The chief administrative office will be hosting a community town hall meeting on Thursday, twenty-first September at six P M at Heritage North. All members of the public are invited to attend and participate.
Thank you. Okay, item six point two.
This was a request that came in from Aaron Buckman, who is a teacher at K L D C S. This was initiative that she took on last year. It's in remembrance of the survivors of the residential school system and it's the orange shirt day. So they will be holding a parade on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, starting at K L D C S. And what she's asking of council is not only to attend, but if they would declare Saturday, September the thirtieth as orange shirt day in and for Kirkland Lake. And that's the resolution that I have. It's moved by Councilor Mino, seconded by Councilor Barker. The council declares Saturday, September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, as orange shirt day in and for the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? It's carried. Okay, item six point three, Ashley, you're going to come up and speak to item A through E.
Good day. Just going to lock in here. All of mine are good news, we're selling some land, it's exciting. Lots of interest here in Kirkland Lake, actually this summer was one of our busiest ones for me and, and Wolf, so that's good news. The first report that I have here is a request for an access agreement for a potential purchaser at the southwestern corner of George Street and Queen Street. This request came to council during in camera last meeting. And we are, step one of the process was to go through an access agreement and which is basically giving the, the applicant the ability to do some rock probing and other studies, potentially environmental studies on the property, to assess whether or not it is going to be feasible to build a single detached dwelling on the, on the property. At this point, the options for council to consider are to proceed with signing the access agreement with this potential purchaser or do not sign the agreement. Oh, am I? Did I skip one? I'm sorry, I did. Do you want me to, do you want me to keep going on this one or go back?
If there's any discussion on this one.
Yeah, I would rather you not discuss it.
Oh.
Because I declared a conflict on that.
Right, sorry, Tony.
And I don't want to be involved in any discussion.
But it will come back as a bylaw and if there's any discussion at that point in time, we can discuss it.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so, sorry, I flipped my page back. So this one here is a request to purchase at one fifty-five government, or Archer Drive. And I'll just highlight the property here on the map, so everyone knows what we're talking about. It's this piece right here, so it's directly across from where the solar project's supposed to take place. The intent here, we've been working with Fisher and Forty-two Real Estate, which is an American company out of Pittsburgh in Texas. The intent was to come here, look for six acres of industrial land for the purpose of constructing a large warehouse on the property. The intent was to do small package and sorting distribution, that's going to operate twenty-four seven and three sixty-five. So at this point, they're ready to go with the sale. They're purchasing about eight acres of land, six of which are usable for forty-two thousand dollars. We are selling the land to Forty-two Real Estate. The way that this bylaw is being carried out, right now we have full intentions to proceed with the sale with Forty-two Real Estate. The way that they do things, we're working with a, kind of like a, a middleman. So the Forty-two Real Estate may change, they may have to come back to bylaw at another meeting to sell to the actual person who is actually going to be purchasing the land. It depends on how, on who is successful in getting the, who bids on the contract. So options for council to consider are to proceed with the sale of the land for Forty-two Real Estate at forty-two thousand dollars, which is my recommendation to you, to counteroffer the sale of the land or to reject the sale of the land. And that comes back as a bylaw later. So questions? Okay, so I'm going to skip six B then? Or, yeah, okay. The third report that I have for council to consider is another bylaw that will be coming later on is the sale of ten lots in the King George cul-de-sac and, and along Portius Avenue. The purchaser here is Kirkland Lake Gold and the intent is to purchase the land and offer them for rent. offer them for rent to their senior staff. This is going to be the same deal we've offered to the rest of the residents of Kirkland Lake or outside citizens who are interested in purchasing. They would buy the land upfront for $10,000. If they build within the first year, they get $5,000 back, and if they build within the second year, they get $3,000 back. Their full intentions are to have houses built before Christmas. I'm not sure if it's all ten or if there's a few of them, but that is their plan, so they wanted us to move forward on this rather quickly. So again, the options for council to consider are to proceed or to reject the sale. And again, it's a bylaw that comes to council. Are there any questions?
Can you just talk about the site plan agreement? Because I think these houses have to comply with something, don't they?
Not site plan control. Site plan control would only be needed for commercial and industrial activity.
Okay, so they're putting, that's the intent, to put?
Houses, yeah, so ten houses, ten single detached dwellings on ten vacant lots. And the reason we're selling, so there is three bylaws associated with the sale of this, and the reason we're doing that is so that they don't merge on title. We have to checkerboard them similarly to what we did with Donna.
So they remain as per lots after their purchase?
Yeah. Yeah. The fourth report, we're still good, is for the sale of land along Highway 66, and this individual, Mr. Caldwell, had submitted an offer to purchase this property prior to the zoning bylaw amendment that was brought to council's attention at the last meeting. Sorry, not last, two meetings ago, I think. The bylaw, although, didn't go through, he does own the property immediately to the west of that, so in order for him to get access to his property, he still would like to continue on with the purchase of the property that fronts on Highway 112. So that bylaw is coming to you for consideration later today, too. Is there any questions on this one?
So just, this is the property that we, we, council did not agree to, we were changing the zoning, was it? So, but the proponent had an opportunity to appeal. Do you know if that's been done?
Yes, it has, it's on my desk.
Okay, so this is the property, then, that he would need to drive into that, should he win his appeal?
Yeah, or if he just wants general access to the property for any other type of development.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So my last report is a resolution to council. There's no report, but I did want to speak on it. Typically, Jenna McNaughton for Waste Reduction Week does a, there's, the province ends up doing a daily activity or daily focus that they emphasize on. So Jenna, actually, on social media, will post what that daily thing is and have a little blurb about what Kirkland Lake is doing in relation to that recycling focus, I guess, of that day. So that is going to be coming up from October 16th to October 22nd, so sign up for social media and you'll get the notices.
There's going to be a resolution for that?
Yeah. So it's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Minow, that council proclaims October 16th to 22nd, 2017, as Waste Reduction Week in and for the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? It's carried.
Thank you.
Ashley, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Somebody in town's circling the idea of having, like, we had this pick-up stuff, remember, for our waste on the curbside, and people would put stuff in, and of course, we go and do some digging for gold, and, you know, people pick up stuff. So somebody was talking about having a one-day exchange of whatever, put it out there. Could you explore that and perhaps report later on, or do you want to speak to it now?
Yeah, we actually talked about this this past week. City of North Bay is doing it this weekend, so we were using them as an example, and we were actually going to bring a request for that for curbside this spring. So that was actually already in our minds to bring to your attention. The stuff's already going to be out if we do a curbside collection, so if you generate perhaps maybe one day before the collection occurs, you can have some sort of like a rummage sale on curbside. I think North Bay's doing it curbside, but there are municipalities that'll actually dedicate a spot where you can have a road and just put stuff on the side, but you have to take everything off. There's a little bit more of an administrative function associated with it that we're exploring, but we will be bringing that back up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ashley. Item seven is the introduction and consideration of bylaws.
Okay, I have a motion moved by Counselor Minow, seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw 17-088, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with the Rural Economic Development Program for Land Inventory Assessment and Community Improvement Plan Development, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's carried.
It's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Minow, that bylaw 17-089, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with NOHFC for a six-month deferral on the repayment of interest and principal on the loan under Project 26032, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's carried.
It's moved by Counselor Minow, seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw 17-090, being a bylaw to authorizing an increase to the construction line of credit with RBC for the new Aquatic Center to $13 million, repealing bylaw 17-081, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's carried.
It's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Minow, that bylaw 17-091, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of 155 Archer Drive to Forty-two Real Estate, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's carried.
Moved by Counselor Minow, seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw 17-092, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of five lots to Kirkland Gold Incorporated, it's one and five, King George Court, two and six, King George Court, seventeen, King George Court, twenty-two, King George Court, and seventeen, Portius Avenue, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Discussion? All in favor? That's carried.
It's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Minow, that bylaw 17-093, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of three lots to Kirkland Lake Gold Limited, this is 10, 18, and 21, King George Court, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Discussion? Counselor Barker?
Before we pass authority, I just wanted to commend Kail Gold for establishing the relationship with the town of Kirkland Lake and for buying these properties, showed the commitment to the town moving forward. I think they need to be commended on this.
I totally agree. Certainly agree with what you're saying, and I think this is just the start of something where we're going to see great things for the town.
All in favor? It's carried.
It's moved by Counselor Minow, seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw 17-094, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of two lots to St. Andrews Goldfields Limited, this is 21, Portius, and 14, King George Court, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Discussion?
I'm just curious, clerk, why is it three bylaws?
This was because if we put them all in one name, this, Ashley was explaining that they would be, they would merge on title.
That's how we do it?
So if we put it in three different names, then, they stay separate.
All in favor? That's carried.
Okay, it's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Minow, that bylaw 17-095, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of HR 776 and L 16653, parcel 5800 CST, this is property along Highway 112, to 002465026 Ontario Incorporated, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Discussion? All in favor?
No? Tony, where are you? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you vote? I'm sorry.
Did I vote?
Yes. Okay, so that's three in one? So it's passed?
Yep, that's all passed. And item bylaw, you need to step down for this one.
Ninety-six, we still have the Salter Pealon. It's moved by Counselor Minow, seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw 17-096, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a contract with Salter Pealon for consulting engineering services for the new Aquatic Center, up to $1.5 million, repealing bylaw 16-008, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Discussion? All in favor?
Did you want Ashley to come back up?
Yeah, Ashley, could you come up, just in case we have discussion? Mayor Tony Azzi has declared conflict on this bylaw approval, so therefore I will act as the presiding chair for this only. So can we read the bylaw first?
It's, hold on, let me a second. So it's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Roman, that bylaw 17-097, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an access agreement with Mr. and Mrs. Morrison for the property at the corner of Queen and George, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Council, questions, comments? Call the motion to vote, all in favor? Thank you. I'll resume the chair to the mayor.
Can three people vote? Yes, yes, you can. There's a quorum here, so when one declares a conflict, three people can still do a quorum.
Thank you, Counselor Minow. We have notices of motion? None? Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Minow, that bylaw 17-098, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held September 19th, 2017, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? That's carried. Counselors' reports?
I was supposed to be at the AFMO conference for this week with the staff, namely Wolf and Brooklyn, and the reason we were going to the AFMO conference is because, and Tom Barker is also a bona fide administration member, we were, we were going to go and pitch Kirkland Lake as the host city next year. So this conference is usually held in September every year, and so Kirkland Lake has, as part of its sports tourism and strategy, is taken upon trying to get as many conferences at the hockey Heritage North as possible, and AFMO was one of them. We did host it in 2005, and at that time, we were sort of welcoming Jack Leighton here in Kirkland Lake, and we had a very successful conference with Ruwan Narenda at the time, and it was one-visit, two cultures, and this time around, we're going to do it on our own, and we do have the facilities, which are, you know, next to none in terms of comparators for the north, and therefore, we have put our hat in the ring for this conference. And tomorrow, or not tomorrow, Thursday, I will be attending the AGM as well as the banquet to pitch this little short video. I thought I'd show you the rest of council for it, because obviously, I'm the only one going to be in attendance, and therefore, you can get to take a quick glimpse.
May I say, you have been to Kirkland Lake. I'm Tony Antonio Azzi, and I'm the mayor of Kirkland Lake. Kirkland Lake is proud to have been selected as the host for the 2018 AFMO conference, and we look forward to having you here. On behalf of town council and all the citizens of Kirkland Lake, I would like to extend a sincere welcome to the Association of Francophone Municipalities of Ontario and all the delegates from around our province. We have a lot to offer in our very unique community that is rich in tradition, ethnic tradition, and especially Francophone tradition. Mining, forestry, and tourism has always taken the forefronts in our community. You're invited to explore our home in the north, where you're sure to enjoy the rugged landscape accompanied with our modern amenities. This is Kirkland Lake's second time as host. In 2005, we partnered with Ruwan Narenda to host the one-visit, two-cultures themed conference. It was a tremendous success that promoted the cross-border sharing of ideas and friendships. We'll do our best to ensure the 2018 conference is every bit as successful. Let me introduce you to my hometown.
Kirkland Lake's beginnings traced back to 1911. That year, William Wright and Ed Hargraves were prospecting in the area. While scrambling through the bush, Wright stumbled across a quartz outcrop with clear evidence of gold. Upon staking their claim, Kirkland Lake gold rush was on. Kirkland Lake is famous for its gold mines. They're among the deepest and richest in the world. Kail is well-known for hockey, too. Legendary hockey broadcaster Foster Hewitt once called Kirkland Lake "the town that made the NHL famous," referring to the fact that this little town has sent 42 players to the National Hockey League. Today, Kirkland Lake is a modern, attractive community with all the amenities and services one would expect to find in a much larger city. Gold mining is still the main economic activity, followed by professional services, forestry, and tourism. Kirkland Lakers are rightly proud of their community and the quality of life it offers. Take a walk around the town, and you'll find many green spaces, parks, and cultural amenities. For example, there's Civic Park, our outdoor event center, the new Aquatic Center, and Heritage North Conference and Events Center. We offer a pace of life that many people enjoy. You can go to work, buy groceries, visit the library and museum, and hit the gym, all within a 10-minute drive. Nature is on our doorstep, too. Drive 20 minutes, and you can go fishing, hunting, camping, skiing, whatever suits you.
So that's what we're going to be pitching at the conference, and so I'd like to thank Wolf, he's not here, and Laura. I guess they're the two mainstays behind it, and Brooklyn as well, Brooklyn Roseon, so they produced this video on our behalf, and then we could also use this video in further promotions of Kirkland Lake, so, thank you.
Thank you, Norman, thank you, and the rest of the crew for representing the community during the AFMO conference. Any other counselors' reports? Well, for myself, I attended on September 5th, I attended Northern College. It was a morning of welcoming the students to Kirkland Lake. Spent a bit of time discussing with them the many amenities that we have for a small town of less than 8,000 people. They were very impressed. Also, Joanne and I attended the NEOMA meeting in Smooth Rock Falls. During the meeting, some of the topics of discussion were the species-at-risk policy. We also discussed fire medic. We also discussed the, the sale and distribution of legalized recreational cannabis. And for our next meeting, which will be in December, we'll be putting together a list of challenges and problems that face the north, and we'll be, for the presentation of that, at the, at the ROMA meeting held in 2018. Oh, and also, I attended, coming back from Smooth Rock Falls, I attended the Northern College, had their Board of Governors meeting here in Kirkland Lake, and I attended the dinner that they had provided that evening on behalf of the town. Yep.
Okay, I have a German, it's moved by Counselor Minow, seconded by Counselor Barker, that council adjourned its regular meeting of September 19th, 2017, to an in-camera meeting to discuss one possible land sale and one possible land lease.
All in favor? Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.